Good evening. How was everyone tonight? So pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-4, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Marra?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Calley?
Here.
Mr. De Prima?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Solakowski?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So now we can move on to the Code of Ethics Corner. Mrs. Calley, I believe that was you? And Mrs. Ellis Foster? Okay. The Code of Ethics Corner Highlight of the Month. The Board Member will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. Thank you. Okay. And now we have, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Calley, a move.
Thank you. Mrs. Calley, can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Mrs. Burns, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Marra?
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay. Now I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Anthony Toronto for a report of the student, of our student representative.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Toronto Jr., and I'm the President of Olbridge High School, and I'm here before you as the Student Representative. Thank you, Mr. Sidedino, Dr. Hoker, Mr. Marra, and Madam President de Carroll, and the Board of Education. The peer program jumped into October with their annual retreat. We were at Olbridge High School for the weekend bonding with our class and learning vital leadership roles. Our peer teachers and counselors did an amazing job planning the entire weekend. That week, we celebrated Respect Week. Monday, we wore blue to respect ourselves. Tuesday was Dream of a Respectful World, Wear Pyjamas. Wednesday was respect for the environment, and we wore green. Thursday was respect others and the community, so we wore school colors, and that led us into Friday, which is Olbridge High School's favorite holiday, Pinkout. The entire week, t-shirts, sunglasses, bandanas, beads, noisemakers, and bracelets were sold during lunch periods, and on Friday, everyone wore their pink. At night, the KOSB student section was packed, and we cheered on the Knights onto a victory of 49 to 7. All that school spirit brought us to our Senior Day, while underclassmen were PSAT testing. The senior class of 2022 got to enjoy themselves at GEIC. There was a competitive kickball and spikeball tournament. Some seniors showcased their talent in Concert in the Park. Others played laser tag, joust, sumo wrestled, and of course, enjoyed some bagels and empanadas. Our fall sports are nearing the end of their season. Boys Soccer became the first team in Olbridge history to win the Red Division Championship. On Sunday, Boys Lacrosse and Project Unified volunteered and sponsored a tent at the SEPTA Fall Festival. We had a great time handing out candy and playing games with the kids. Last week, we aired our first nightly wrap-up of the year, and can be found on their YouTube channel. Today, we had our first President's Council meeting, where each president of every club was able to share a little bit about their club or honor society, and it was a very productive meeting. Homecoming tickets were on sale last week for seniors. This year, the homecoming theme will be Welcome Home OB, and it will take place in our very own courtyard. And finally, our senior class trip to Disney is scheduled for June 1st to the 4th. Sign-up is on parent portal with more information about payment options. This year is getting better and better by the day, and I can't imagine where we will be in June. Thank you.
Excellent. Great. It's, thank you so much, Anthony. You guys are doing so much. It's just so exciting to hear all of the things you all are doing. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we are going to move on to recognition, the best part of the meeting. Mr. Sidedino?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I stand before you to recognize two of the Boy Scouts that will be recognized tonight in achieving their Eagle Scout Award. I really shouldn't call it an award because it's really a level of accomplishment for all their hard work, commitment, and dedication. Mr. Marzoli could not be here tonight to represent Shepherd School, so I now call up Dominic Wong, and I will read the recognition as he stands here with his scout leader and Dominic and his family if they'd like to come up as well. Come on, Dominic, get a close look. Right there, that's good. I'll move over a little bit, like, the camera's got to pick you up. Move the Board of Education to recognize Dominic Wong, a 12th grade student at Olbridge High School for completing his Eagle Scout project at Shepherd School. Dominic donated his time and money and completed and built a fully stocked food pantry, which will serve many members of our community and surrounding areas of Shepherd School when they face food hardships. He organized the scouting troop, solicited donations, volunteers, and helped complete this worthwhile project. Shepherd School is now committed to maintaining this pantry and is most grateful to Dominic's effort and generosity. So Dominic, I present you with this recognition. I'm going to hold up for a second a picture of the pantry process and the work that you did for humanity and your benevolence. Discreately appreciated. Thank you very much. Good job, Dominic. Thank you. For the next recognition, I will have Mr. McHugh come up, as the project was done at his school, but I will read the recognition. Move the Board of Education to recognize Michael Gallagher, a 10th grade student at Olbridge High School for completing his Eagle Scout project at Carpenter Elementary School. Michael built an outdoor classroom for the staff and students to utilize. He arranged for supplies to be donated and provided all of the labor for the project. Students and teachers thoroughly enjoy this new academic environment and are taking full advantage of it. So please, Michael Gallagher, please come up with your scout leader, your family, and Mr. McHugh.
Mike, behalf of all of our staff, students at Carpenter Elementary School, I really wanted to thank you, Troop 192, and your family for putting together this beautiful outdoor classroom. We've really been utilizing it the last couple of weeks outside. The kids enjoy it. The teachers love it. They can't wait to get outside. I know you put a lot of time, effort into it, and I truly appreciate everything that you and your family have done for Carpenter Elementary School. Thank you, Michael.
Michael, I just want to say one thing. To be a 10th grader and to achieve your Eagle Scout is really quite an accomplishment. I've been doing these for years, these recognitions, and I don't often come across students in the 10th grade who can get that level of recognition. So congratulations on your commitment and getting it done. Great job.
Mr. Sidedino?
Yes.
Can I just ask, one of the troop leaders from 129, how many Eagle Scouts does that make now for their troop?
The answer is about 80 to 100, but we won't put them on the spot if you want to. For the next one, you better come with, come with some data. 1965. Okay. Our next recognition, I'd like to recognize one of our own, one of our own team members who really displayed some heroic skills and following his training. Will Security Officer William Will Armenti please join me at the desk? Thank you for being here, Will. Move the Board to recognize Security Officer William Will Armenti for quickly being able to identify that a student was in distress while eating lunch in the cafeteria at Carl Sandberg Middle School. Without hesitation, Mr. Armenti administered the Heimlich maneuver, and we cannot stress enough how grateful and appreciative we are to his quick response and his decisive actions. I really must say that I came to know Will, and he was always volunteering to work when we had our testing protocols and we started our vaccine protocols. So he's really someone who really cares about the health and well-being of others. I want to thank him for being there. I'm sure the family deeply appreciates what you did for their daughter, and we're going to give you the certificate on providing you with a Grilstone gift card for you and your family to go out to dinner to celebrate, and you are definitely a recipient of the Olbridge Hero of Our Schools pin. So congratulations to you, and thank you, Charlie. Thank you. Willis also, not someone who likes to lie in life either. Thank you very much, Board of Education and Public.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sidedino. And so I think we need a motion to move this recognition.
Burns will make the motion.
Mrs. Burns, thank you. Can we have a second?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, I for one would like to congratulate Dominic and Michael. What great job. I'm always so impressed at the achievements that you guys do, and you know, it's just such a, you have such great leaders, such great role models. Thank you guys so, so much. Great job. And to Mr. Armenti, thank you. I don't know where you went. There you are. Thank you for your quick action. It was, you know, I'm just an amazing act of heroism. Thank you so much. Okay. Can we have a roll call, Mr. Marra?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three pass.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. So now we're moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you again, Madam President. First, I would really like to commend our student representative for doing a great job identifying the Pinkout and the Senior Day activities. It has been a long time since I was able to be in my office and hear the senior activities going on on the campus, and hear the students and their excitement, and it is something that is definitely missed, and I'm glad that these activities are going on and future activities are being planned. I'd also like to recognize the amazing turnout at this weekend's SEPTA and OBA partnership for the Fall Fest. That was truly quite amazing. The tent or treat brought a lot of young people in, and we saw families really enjoying the day and having great, a great time celebrating this community and all that we stand for. I was also able to go over to the Relay for Life kickoff event, the Bar for Life, and again, well put together, and it's something for everybody in this community almost every weekend. So greatly appreciated to everyone who made that possible. In alignment with that, we really must recognize the trends, the COVID trends in our state, in our community. We're going in the right direction as we are getting closer to a place where I really hope that we're at the end of this, and these masks can be removed, and our students can learn in the most enjoyable of environments, and we can celebrate all of the past activities that we've had without restriction. Just today, in the state of New Jersey, we had 1,151 new cases. Yesterday was less than 1,000. We haven't had numbers that low since August of 2021. So we had definitely a small spike as September began, and around, across the state, we saw that here within our school district where we had sometimes 40 to 50 students positive. Today, we have 20 students positive and only two staff members. So we are trending in a downward direction. We anticipate that that will keep on coming down, and hopefully by spring, we will really be able to kick this virus in you-know-where. To partner with that, the, just to give an update on testing compliance, as Executive Order 253 comes into effect this week, we had our staff members who are not vaccinated fill out the proper compliance paperwork online for our Miramis laboratory saliva testing. The, it's the least restrictive of the COVID testings that I know of. Our staff members who are choosing the testing option instead of becoming vaccinated, we'll get four test kits that'll take them through the month once a week. They'll drop them off. Right now, tentatively, we're leaving on Tuesday mornings, and hopefully the lab will get them to the lab by that afternoon, and on Wednesday, late Wednesday, we'll have the results from everyone's tests that are submitted. So as that's going forward, and we've seen the numbers decline, we're hoping that, again, we're moving towards that normalcy. Everyone is aware that the district sent out its required 60-day survey for the LEA Plan for Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services. That data has been collected. I believe it will be going out on the district website. But the one topic that we always came to talk about for almost a month's worth of meetings was the masking, and we haven't really seen any change in that in public opinion locally. From the parent, family point of view, 65% either strongly agree or agree with the need for continuous masking, while 28% of parents strongly disagree or disagree with that. From the staff side, 76% strongly agree or agree, and 20%. Any numbers that aren't there, like in the parental area, 7% were indifferent to it. So that is our information as we're going forward. We're seeing a lot of our normalcy come back. We're going to continue to celebrate that. Tonight, you should have received information on social media and also emailed to parents in reference to the staffing shortage we're having with some of the contracted bus services, how we're dealing with that. We've already started a plan that allows the, because what we're having, especially at the high school in the morning, is you have the condition now where more parents either haven't returned to work or are working from home, or are concerned about putting their child on a bus. So the same number of buses have to come here. We have to provide that service to everyone. We're not sure if you're going to get on the bus or you're not going to get on the bus. We still have to have the bus passed by your house. So there's still approximately 80 buses come here twice a day. What we're having is more car traffic come here, because parents who are working from home or haven't returned to the workforce have more of an option to drive their child to school. Parents who are still hesitant about putting their child on a school bus are driving their children to school. It's creating more backups. We have addressed that in the past week with having more of a seamless flow of bus traffic coming in, so there's not a stoppage, waiting for the students to get dismissed into the schools in the morning, and I met with, virtually with, a representative from OPPD today to help address some of the concerns on 516 as we're dismissing buses and cars from the high school as well. So hopefully, those things we worked out, as you know from the information that went today, we're working towards getting transportation back to a more seamless operation with the restriction of staff that we do have from contracted bus services. We talked about last week, just in this agenda alone, it's probably gone up since you posted it, there's over 100 bus routes that we had to call back because the contracted bus drivers did not show up for the run or weren't able to show up for the run because they didn't have staffing for it. Whenever that happens, you know, think about less than 30 days since the last board meeting, we have over 100 of them. That means our drivers did their routes and then did somebody else's route. That's part of the delay, and we're working to make that better. We're hoping that more people come back to the workforce for bus driving and looking for ways to make that more seamless. For the progress towards goals, I'm going to ask Dr. Tuohy, just to give us an update on some of the elementary grading, a memo that's going to come out tomorrow. He will address that concern and give you a preview as to what to expect.
Good evening, everybody. Tomorrow, there will be a memo sent out to elementary parents and guardians reviewing a number of resources concerning our movement to standard-based report cards. On the district website currently, there are the six models of the standard-based report cards, which will be implemented on a trimester basis for this year. Those standard-based report cards are based off rubrics and off the New Jersey Student Learning Standards to ensure that the parents and guardians have a good understanding of where their students are and where they need to go in the coming years. Additionally, in that correspondence, there will be information about the elementary grade book and its usage in grades 3 through 5, parent teacher conferences, Microsoft Teams usage for students and staff, and progress reports for the elementary students going into this upcoming trimester season. On Wednesday, excuse me, November 10th, there will be a curriculum and special services meeting. That's on Wednesday, November 10th at 7 o'clock. That'll be via Zoom. And special thanks to Mrs. Michael, Mrs. Bensroll, Mrs. Donardo, Mrs. Coghlan, and all the volunteers who made SEPTA such a wonderful event on Sunday. It was probably one of the best events I've been to in quite some time. So thank you all for participating in that.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Any correspondence, Mr. Marra? Okay. And any special committee reports? Mr. Dunn, I believe you had one?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam President. Last week, last Tuesday, which was the 12th, we convened the Finance, Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee to discuss certain aspects of transportation. There were a lot of concerns out there pertaining to the delays of transportation, the issues of buses not showing up, et cetera, et cetera. So we heard, you know, the concern of the public, and as Mr. Sidedino has articulately explained this evening, there are concerns out there that are beyond our control with driver shortages, our vendors not showing up, et cetera, et cetera, and our bus drivers have to make up the slack. So he conveyed the concerns, and the Board is very concerned about this, obviously, because transportation is very important. We need to get the kids to school on time and, of course, very safely, and there was a lot of concern out there in the public, and we felt that it was very important for us to address it. And also, the administration went to an extent of putting a flyer together that I believe was distributed or will be distributed, which explains in great detail the concerns that we've been having, and we truly appreciate everyone's patience. We understand when there's a transportation delay, especially when you're waiting with your child to get picked up, it's going to, you know, cause the parents to be late. There's a trickle-down effect, and we get it. We understand. We as a Board, you know, understand the pressures, and you know, we made it very clear that we need to do everything in our power to address those concerns. So, and we will, and like Mr. Sidedino said, you know, they're going to do everything they can to try to mitigate the pressures and the delays that we're experiencing. Hopefully, with COVID starting to dwindle a bit, hopefully, people will come back to work. Some of the seniors will go back to driving buses, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. So we did deal with that issue. It was also the concern of the CAFREs came in concerning transportation audit. You know, we spoke with them in great detail. It was a very intimate setting, and you know, the Board members who were participating, we all understand, you know, we all are involved with the special needs population. We understand the pressures on the parents, and you know, in a very intimate setting, you know, we heard, we understood what their concerns are, and the Board has decided to, at this moment, to internally review our policies and procedures with transportation, see where that gets us, and then we will make a recommendation to possibly move forward with some other audits. But right now, we are taking it very seriously. You know, we all are concerned, and if there's a concern out there that's brought to our attention, we're going to give it 110% attention. And I have to say, you know, we want to hear these things, and committee meetings are important, and we want people to come. It's where you can voice in a smaller setting, and it's more of a intimate, you know, discussion where, you know, we can understand fully, we can ask questions unvetted. It really goes to the core of who we are trying to solve the concerns. But we had, you know, those two issues, and there was another issue with a parent who had some concerns about her child's health concerns and issues on the bus, and we're trying to work with everyone, and we're going to continue doing that. But it was very important that we had this meeting because there was so much concern out in the public, and you know, what we did, we had to do, we did convene as a Board, and we did discuss in great detail on how we're going to approach it. The entire meeting did take up just transportation because it was the greatest concern. Next meeting, we'll do transportation again and also get into buildings and grounds, and there's other things to be said. But again, it's just very important to understand for the public to come out to the committee meeting. That's when you can voice your concern, whether it's the curriculum meeting, whether it's finance, buildings, grounds, transportation, whether it's athletics, whether it's policy, this is your chance to express in a setting your feelings to the Board. There are usually three to five Board members in the room with all the administration, and we want you to take advantage of that forum. I know that, you know, people like to come here and speak in public. That's all great, but to really do the work and make us aware what's going on, come to these meetings. That's why we have them, and it's transparent. Any questions can be asked. We ask, we allow the public to speak fully, their mind. They can participate in a dialogue and conversation, and it's a great mechanism to try to find that common ground that works for everyone. So with that said, I thank Madam President and the Board and the public for taking the time to participate in that, in the committee meeting, and hopefully, we'll make some good strides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dunn regarding operations?
No questions, but I just have a comment. I did schedule a...
(noise) Mr. G. I did schedule an athletics/athletic... Oh, my God. We changed the name. I forgot what it's called now. Extracurricular, thank you. That's not what it used to be called. Athletics Extracurricular Curriculum Meeting for Tuesday, October 26, 7:00 p.m., in the Olbridge High School cafeteria. It won't be Zoom. It will be live. And as Mr. Dunn said, we really appreciate input and attendance, and they're interesting and fun. So please come out. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. De Prima, when'd you say that was?
October 26th, Tuesday. I might have said Wednesday. It's Tuesday, October 26, 7:00 p.m. in the high school cafeteria.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any, or are there any other committee reports?
Mr. Dunn, if I could just remind, this Thursday is Strategic Planning Meeting, and I just want to give a clarification. We're, it is not really the start of the strategic planning process. What we're doing is we are getting a presentation from our New Jersey School Board Rep on two options we have for the process, and so we can decide which way to go. Both of them involve the community, and they're going to be over several months, so there's going to be a lot of opportunity for community participation. Once we decide on the options, then we will be sending out some information so that the public is aware of the different dates and how the process will run, so that they can plan to be part of it. So I think, I don't want there to be confusion that we're kicking off the strategic planning on Thursday. It's just looking at what options we have for the process. And of course, the public is invited to that, but that's what that meeting is going to be for. So, and that will be on Zoom, trying to accommodate our representative, so she doesn't have to travel to give the presentation. It is 7:00. The information is on the district website.
Excellent. We've got a lot going on. Does anyone else have any committee reports?
No, I don't have a report yet, but on November 11th, I hope. Okay, our next meeting is November 10th, which is curriculum and special services.
Got it.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. All right. Lots of committee meetings for you guys to attend. Excellent. Okay, now we have, I will open it up to hearing of the residents on agenda items only. So if you have something that you want to speak about regarding an item on the agenda, you can go up to the podium and just, you know, say your name and let us know what the item on the agenda is. Okay. And Mr. Mayor, was there any emails?
Yes, there was one email, and it's from Ms. Karen Delgado. Good evening. This is the rest of my letter that was read last week. Unfortunately, the last comment and the two best things in my letter were left out because of time constraints. Last comment, it is a well-known fact that some of you do not like, approve, or whatever, the governor of New Jersey. But you're spot on. That stage is not a platform to showcase that. Please, for the sake of the children that may be watching, including those who are working the television station, please stop with the name-calling of those you do not approve. We want to talk polit-, you want to talk politics, go to the township meetings. And now for the good stuff. First, I wanted to reach out and say thank you. Thank you to the bus drivers for getting our children to school safely. Thank you to the noon hour supervisors who oversee the lunches at all the elementary schools. Thank you to the police officers who put their lives on the line for every single student or staff member without thinking twice about it. Thank you to the crossing guards who help the flow of traffic around our school. Thank you to the custodians for doing everything that you do every single day to keep our schools clean and open. Thank you to the powers who help our children every day. Thank you to the nurses who put themselves in close contact with all sorts of oddities on any given day, not just the coronavirus. Thank you to the teachers for going above and beyond making sure all our children are catching up. Thank you to the secretaries who help keep the schools running efficiently. Thank you to the principals who help the schools follow the rules that sometimes they don't agree with, but still do. Thank you to the board members for your volunteering your time in a sometimes thankless position. Thank you to the administration department who holds it all together with a lot of super glue. And thank you, Mr. Cedidino, for taking the grunt of all the opinions and still doing the best for our children. I would never want to be in your shoes. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You are all grossly underpaid for that you do for most of our precious gifts. Thank you to everyone I have missed, and I apologize for the oversight. Second, as most of you know, my 13-year-old son Bobby Delgado, who at the time had finished seventh grade at Jonas Oak School, was diagnosed in June 2020 with a cancerous tumor in the back of his neck. After one year, 365 days of which he was in the hospital, 185 of those days, I am happy, ecstatic, actually be able to say that now he is cancer-free and in remission. We had so much support from our current board members and their families, and I just wanted you all to know how much we really appreciate it all that you have done for him. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out, Karen Delgado, proudly living at Marlborough Road in Olbridge, New Jersey.
Thank you so much, and I am just, you know, thrilled to hear that Bobby is doing well. It was a long, long battle for him and for his family. And thank you, Karen, for that, that letter. I'm so glad he's doing well. Mr. Cedidino, did you have anything to say, or shall we move on? I'm going to close, sorry, close the hearing of the residents?
No, just, I'm overwhelmed with, you know, appreciation that Bobby's doing well.
Okay. Okay. On to policy. And I need to move Resolution One. Do I need a motion?
Burns will make the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion?
Yes. All right. So, good job to everyone that went to the Freedom March in Trenton. It's glad to see all the people standing up for their rights. And back to last week, I mentioned the statute 2614-4, which says that you cannot force medical testing without the free consent, without undue influence, like terminating them from their physicians. And I tried to explain this to Kane, but similar to the administration, they don't care about the law. And it even says, this is the test that they give to their students, and it clearly says, "for research use only, not for use in diagnostic procedures," similar to the masks that say, "they are not designed to keep the virus from spreading, and they could actually be harmful to you." And they wouldn't be firing doctors and nurses if we were still in the situation that we were in last year. And as I predicted, an executive order in Texas, which is the opposite of the executive order here, which bans the mandates, is being openly violated by major institutions. You know, so let's just remember that. And so I will be, I won't be approving this policy because I continue to believe that it is unconstitutional, and a state of emergency was lifted months ago. So I'm still going to stand by that statute, 2614-4. I'll send it to you if you need it. And that is it. I won't be voting to terminate anyone that doesn't get a test. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just for clarification, are you asking for a separation? Or are you voting no on all of the policies?
Look, can I?
Yeah, you can separate. Just separate them out.
All right, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. So I need a roll call. We're separating, what is that, 1648?
Yeah, why don't we do a roll call separately on Policy 1648.13?
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, for just that one policy?
Okay. On Policy 1648.13, Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
No.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Policy 1648.13 passes.
Thank you.
On the rest of the policies, I'm sorry. The rest of the policies, Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
The remaining policies pass.
Thank you. All right. Now we're moving on to curriculum and professional development. I need a motion for Resolutions One through Five.
Calley will move.
Thank you. Mrs. Calley, can I have a second?
I'll move second.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. Any discussion on curriculum and professional development?
I just have a question. Is the, is the event that Mrs. Lowry going to going to be televised or not? I know sometimes they did, but I'm not sure. Isn't that the, where she's going to receive the Blue Ribbon recognition?
I don't know that it will be televised. When I attended in the past, it was not televised, but it may have been recorded for future use. If that's the case, I'll make sure the board gets it.
We'll put it on the website.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
And Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Five.
Thank you. And now I need a motion to move Athletics, Resolution One. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Any discussion? All right. Roll call.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution One passed.
Excellent. Okay. Finance, Resolutions One through Twelve. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move Finance, Items One through Twelve, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Can I have a second?
Calley will first.
Thank you, Ms. Calley. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Carroll. I just want to revisit the electricity usage issue. This month, we did not receive bills for Grissom, McDivitt, Memorial, Miller, Chara, and Voorhees. So on the bill list next month, it may seem like those, the costs associated to those buildings are higher than normal, but we're always subject to the electricity bills and when they come in. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Any other discussion on Finance? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Twelve passed.
All right. Nothing under non-certificated personnel office or operational. So we have non-certificated personnel other. We have Resolutions One through Fifteen. Can I have a motion, please?
Calley will move.
Thank you, Ms. Calley. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion?
Yes, separating one for discussion, please.
Separating one for discussion. Okay. All right. Mr. Solakowski?
Okay, we have several retirees. In fact, we have a total of one, two, three, six retirees this month. Christine Shalinas, 37 years, noon hour supervisor. Barbara Como, 15 years, also a noon hour supervisor. Ann Reed, Olbridge High School Mathematics, 16 years. Jan Shan, Carl Sambro Middle School Special Ed, 17 years. Lorraine Doris, Carpenter School RN. She shouldn't retire. We need her, but she has 25 years. And Linda Delacour, Delacour Quilla, bus driver, 25 years, with a total of 135 years of service. I would like to thank all of you for your service, and the board also thanks you. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. So you went, you went through all the, all of them. Okay, did it all once? Good. Okay. And yes, congratulations to everyone on their retirement. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Fifteen passed.
Great. All right. Certificated personnel. We have Items One through Eighteen. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move certificated personnel, Items One through Eighteen, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing them. Roll call.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Eighteen passed.
Okay. We have non-certificated personnel transportation, Resolutions One and One through Three. Can I have a motion, please?
Calley will move.
Thank you, Mrs. Calley. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ellis Foster, thank you. Any discussion?
Madam President, real quick, I'm sorry. I just want to give a shout-out to Linda Delacour. She, I know her for many, many years. She's a wonderful bus driver. She was always dedicated to not only driving the bus safely, but making the students on her bus feel at home. My daughter, as many of you know, was a special needs child, and Linda would be one of the buses that would be assigned to my daughter to bring her to her various schools for, for her day. And Linda was always professional, very helpful, very loving, and just, you know, a perfect example of the bus drivers that we have in our district. So I want to wish Linda an incredible retirement. She deserves it, and I hope that she spends quality time with her family now. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Dunn. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Three passed.
Okay. Now we have, where am I? Transportation, One through Five. Can I have a motion, please?
Calley will move.
Mrs. Calley, thank you. Can I have a second?
Giordano, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Five passed.
Okay. Now we have Supplies, Equipment, and Services, Resolutions One through Three. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis Foster, can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Any discussion? Supplies, Equipment, and Services, One through Three. Nope. Roll call.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Three.
Okay. Now we have miscellaneous. We have Resolutions One through Five. Motion, please?
Calley will move. Thank you, Mrs. Calley. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Discussion for miscellaneous.
Yes, Mr. Carroll, on Item Number One, it's listed as the meetings will be at the main auditorium. We'll fix that to reflect that. It'll be at the TV studio.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Giordano?
No, on One. Yes for the rest.
No on one, uh, yes for the rest.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five passed.
Okay. And there is no board secretary and board business? All right. So now I'm going to open the meeting up to the hearing of the residents on any school district issue. Once again, you can just, you know, go over to the podium and just give us your name, and you have the floor.
There we go. Hi, good evening, my name is Carolyn Hogan. Um, I just want to briefly talk about, uh, my perspective, uh, based on something that Dr. Tui had just recently talked about, as well as the email I sent today. Um, first of all, I sent an email to, uh, the president expressing my disappointment in the lack of communication to the elementary school parents regarding the change in the grading policy. Uh, while Dr. Tui did quickly respond to my concerns today, I did want to just publicly express that we've received numerous phone calls on the changes to the lunch schedules for the programs over the summer, yet not one phone call or email regarding the trimester, as well as the change in the grading policy. I'm very concerned that we continue to, you know, um, treat our elementary kids with kid gloves, and we're watering things down, that when they get to middle school, it's going to be this mountain of new information and new policies they have to abide to, that's not setting them up for success. Um, to find out at back to school night from my son's fourth grade teacher that this change has occurred, and unfortunately, I felt bad for her because she really didn't have any information regarding it. I truly believe changes like this, while I know that they were discussed back in February at a meeting, um, I really believe that those changes should have been communicated to parents early on, either at the start of the school year or right before the school year. I am happy to hear that there is a letter going out tomorrow, and I look forward to seeing that. But at the same time, I'm hoping that offers resources for parents that if they have continued questions or concerns, that there's a, a path that we can go to, to understand this, to ensure our children are proper, properly assessed, as well as set up for success in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any?
Hi, everybody. Um, I just want to take a minute and thank everybody for, um, we had the combined SEPTA OBEA, um, first annual fall festival, tent to treat on Sunday, and, um, just the outpouring of love and volunteers was just tremendous. Um, I think we're still getting over it. It's, it was just, it was amazing. Um, to thank every adult that was there would take me all night. I think most people in this room played a part in my, our event, and, uh, we're truly appreciative. The parents had a great time, the families, the kids. Um, Dr. Tui, thank you for all your help. Nancy Cogwood and OBEA, thank you for your help. Um, it was just a wonderful, wonderful event in this inclusive community, and I think everybody that was there felt it. Um, I'd be amiss if we didn't thank the students, and that's what we would like to do.
So we have a few, uh, a few, uh, clubs and students that we really want to address, because as much as the adults pulled through, the students really need this event. I mean, they were like, they were our knights in shining armor, no pun intended. Um, they came at no, we were there eight-thirty, tired if anything. They came, they took over, I mean, we asked, they did. Um, Red Cross Club, man the sand art tent, set it up, did it all day with the kids, had a ton of fun. Even cleaned up and broke down. Uh, Jun- Junior ROTC presented the colors and ran all the carnival games. Um, they also helped us set up. Um, High School Unified Generation, they did tencils, they made their own stencil and did glitter, um, tattoos that had We Are One and, um, Unified Together on it. Chara play Unified, they did a whole Unified in Action tent. Um, kids were involved in that, every, everyone was involved. Uh, the Little Cross Team, um, incredible. Um, they, the kids loved hanging out with you. I also saw you guys doing twister, so I know there was a lot of fun to be had there. Um, Olbridge Travel, uh, three M soccer team, the Cobras, they were, the soccer net was like a huge hit. Um, that, that was really fun for all ages. Kalani Warren, her and all her freshman friends came, they set up the pumpkin patch, three hundred and fifty pumpkins. They ran it, they did all the stickers with the kids, and they helped clean it up, broke down tents and everything. Um, Yash, a big shout out to Yash Agarwal, Agarwal, sorry if I butchered your name, um, from the Red Cross Club. He came at nine-thirty in the morning and did not stop until we left in the rain at five-fifteen. Um, uh, he helped break down every tent with Mr. Lamboy, Ms., um, Mr. Berto at Glenn Preschool. Her father, every year donating all of our tents. Um, Andy, he's incredible, he came, he sets them up, he puts the weights, he breaks them down. I mean, we, we were kicking him out of there, we were like, just go home. Um, but really, it, it was incredible, the students front, this was how to be the single best inclusive event I have ever been to. Um, I've, you know, it's just, it was every age group, and I think that's what we've always aimed to do for SEPTA, and this event really proved it. Um, the best community feel felt like a small town from everyone, every age group, every admin, parent, teacher, student, everyone. Um, we, we could have never expected that, the event to be that way. Right? Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, um, we never thought, we put out a lot of money for this event, as well as the OBEA, but I'm happy to say, we never thought we would make our money back, but we actually made a couple thousand dollars towards the special education program, so. Um, that's one thing, um, we never put into our budget. We just thought we were gonna, you know, have this wonderful event, but we actually made money, and, um, that all goes back into our program, and, um, so it was just wonderful. And, um, I think we're gonna do it next year too, so get ready. Thank you very much.
Also, um, God bless Bobby, so happy to hear that he has cancer free, uh, music to my ears.
Thank you guys so much. It was such a great event, such an amazing event, you guys did a fantastic job. Um, anyone else? Before I close? Okay. I'm going to close the hearing of the residents. Shut my microphone off. And, um, now we'll move on to any old business. Does anyone have any old business?
Yes. I do. Could the administration bring us, us being the board and the public, up to date when, when the testing will take place for the general ed population in terms of, uh, the, the status of where they're at, given all the lost time that we've had? And, uh, has there been any thinking, uh, generally, along the line of, on the, on the, uh, basis of fact that we all assume there is considerable lost learning? Is there any, any, uh, pre-meetings that you've had to see how we're going to recover from it?
So, uh, the Start Strong Assessment for the high school is taking place this week. The GNC was, uh, Monday and Tuesday. The main campus, first Start, Start Strong Assessment will be on Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, the PSAT took place last mon- Wednesday on October thirteenth, as well as middle school testing for the Start Strong Assessment, and the week before that was, um, elementary grades. So elementary first, middle school in second, and then, uh, high school is finishing up this week, and the window to close is this Friday. Uh, additionally, the district has done, uh, benchmarking across our all elementary and middle school programs. Uh, those results are, uh, being collated now by Dr. Ferry and Dr. Klandria. Um, those results can be shared with the board, uh, once they are finalized, and we are finalizing additionally a plan to address any, uh, learning impact that has happened over the course of the past, uh, year and a half, um, as part of this, uh, in and out of school that we've seen, uh, periodically over the last year and a half.
And one other question, Dr. Tui. The tests that are being administered, are those uniform tests throughout the state, throughout the county, or are they unique to us?
Uh, the Start Strong Assessment is, um, not unique to us, it's statewide, uh, so we will have, uh, a norm assessment across all different, uh, towns in, in New Jersey. Um, it is, is just New Jersey, to the best of my knowledge, but I can give you more information on that. Uh, it is across, uh, mathematics, English, and science across certain grade levels.
All right. And, uh, the last question is, uh, when is the anticipated date that you'll have the complete results for the whole district?
So the elementary results, we already have. Uh, we're looking through some of the data, the Start Strong Assessment comes back, uh, relatively quickly, quickly within twenty-four hours. Uh, so once we're done with the high school on Thursday, we could potentially have something for the curriculum meeting on November tenth. Um, and as part of that too, we could provide the board and the public, any areas of weakness that we've seen, um, across our various grade levels in areas of potentially, you know, reading in elementary, mathematics in middle school, or some other areas where we anticipate there might be, uh, concerns, um, as we transition into this new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Tui.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything for old business?
Yes. Um, good job, Se- SEPTA, on your, um, successful event, and, um, when it comes to the trimester and the block scheduling, um, I was against that, I liked things the way they were, you know, being in Olbridge High School just a few years ago. So, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, sorry. I didn't think you were done. Um, all right. Anyone else for old business? All right. New business? Any new business?
I don't know if it's new business or good of the order, or whatever we call it anymore, but I just wanted to say thank you to Officer Armenti. You saved a child's life, kind of puts everything else, makes us everything else interview. You saved a child's life. Thank you. And Mrs. Delgado, if you're watching, thank you for the accolades, but I think I could speak on behalf of everybody up here, we're ecstatic about your son, that, again, no- nothing else really matters when you talk about the children. Thank you.
Anyone else for new business?
I, uh, new, what is it?
New business, well, okay. If there's no new business, we're gonna.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, I was, I was waiting for.
Um, I just wanted to give yet another shout out to, uh, the executive board and the members of SEPTA and all the volunteers, and to the OBEA and all of their volunteers. I attended the event on Sunday, and honestly, there were points in time where I was forced to tears. It was such a phenomenal event, and you guys did such a great job, but I think equally important, I don't want to say more importantly, was the feeling. It was a feeling of, um, sorry. I think I'm channeling Kelly. Getting a little choked up. Uh, it was, it was just such a great feeling to see all the kids and all the families out there, and the sense of community. And I left there with a feeling of hope, that we're getting back to the old Olbridge. Everybody's coming together. Um, I just, I wanted to, uh, also just congratulate, uh, Dominic and Michael, um, on achieving the, uh, their awards, and Mr. Armenti, thank you, and to Bobby's mom. I don't know if you could see, but the two of us were sitting here crying, so, um, like, like Sal said, thank you for that letter, but more importantly, we are so beyond thrilled to hear, um, about Bobby, so. Uh, I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Mr. Giordano?
Yes, now I will. Um, I'm also glad that Bobby's doing okay, and congratulations, um, to, uh, the troop, I think it's troop one-two-nine, I think, with all the Eagle Scouts and the Eagle projects that they've been doing in the past few years. And, um, I forgot to say this before I voted, but I do like the auditorium meetings better, but thinking about it, if it is easier for the TV crew to do it here, I'll, I'll vote for it next month. And, um, just, uh, get out and vote. Um, I'll, I'll be glad to be participating in my first gubernatorial election, voting in it. So I'm very excited about that, and, um, keep in touch, email me, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
I just want to add that, really the reason for moving these here is so that we can have the semblance of normalcy that you've been asking for, because the play is taking part, the musical, and the students are using that facility, and that's why we have to have our students here, so, uh, our meetings here, so that we can use the auditorium for student purposes.
Yes. And this is where they normally, our meetings normally have always been, in the TV studio, so it's, it wasn't normal for us to be in the auditorium, and we were also there for, you know, the COVID purposes and separation and things, so. I happen to like it here, because I just feel like it's so much more personable, and I can see you guys better, so hard to see people in the auditorium, so I personally have no like it here, but I understand, um, you know, if, if somebody doesn't. Um, so, I just want to say, so, I don't know if this is new business, or, or whatever. Um, I wanted to address, um, Ms. Hogan, you know, thank you for coming out and speaking tonight, and, you know, I know you and I were corresponding a little bit, and, um, so I just wanted to touch base a little bit about, um, you know, and I had, uh, talked to Mr. Sid, you know, a little bit about this, I like to harass him over the weekend. Um, and we were talking about how we can better communicate, you know, because there's always room for improvement when it comes to communication, you know, there's always something that we can try to do better. And I know, um, years ago, uh, pre, pre-COVID, we did, there was something that we did, it was, uh, I think, Olbridge Online? It was cool, yeah. So that we tried to get more information out, and I, when COVID happened, the pandemic, things just literally went, you know, crazy, honestly, I, you know, for lack of a better term, you know, we, you know, with shortages of staff and whatever. But as I was, you know, talking to him, you know, I don't know, you know, you guys saw the, um, the bus flyer that went out, which is something that explained, you know, in a very good manner about the busing. So to, you know, piggyback on that, if we could maybe, and, you know, he's sitting over there looking at me, he has no idea that I'm going to charge him with doing something, you know, um, we can maybe, um, have something called The Bridge, being that that's our theme, and maybe a monthly kind of newsletter or something where we have our committee, because we talk about our committee reports here, but not for anything. There's not really, not, the, the whole district is not watching this meeting, you know, let's face it. So if we can get our committee reports really down in writing, and what, Mr. Prima, I know you always. Yes.
We have a form from years ago, some of the newer members might not even know about it. It, it, it's a detailed form, and what we used to do was send it to our colleagues before the public, before it was read in public, so you'd know what to expect and what was coming, and I, I have it on my computer, I'll get it out to everybody.
Yeah. So if we can, you know, try to do that, and, and get it in writing, and if we can somehow get that in a, uh, in a format where we can send it out to the parents or put it on the district website, so that you guys are more aware of what's happening, you know? I, I understand it's very difficult to get to the curriculum meetings, to get to all of these meetings that we have, everybody's busy. So if there's a way, I, I hear you, and, and I understand, and, you know, if there's a way that we can work on getting that communication better, so that everybody is, is on the same page, so, you know, I just wanted to say that, uh, it's something that we are work, you know, the thought process is there, so, thank you for bringing that. And, uh, also to the people with the busing issues, you know, bringing that, you know, to, to everyone's attention that we're going to work on, so. That is what I wanted to say. Does anyone else have anything, old business or good of the order? Mrs. Ellis Forster?
Yeah, if I can piggyback on your piggyback. Thank you, Ms. Hogglin, for coming out, and, and other people with transportation. And what I would like to ask is, as we start rolling out the strategic planning and having these community meetings, we're going to try to do it so that people can come but not have to spend a whole bunch of time, but having your voices there and sharing ideas of, you know, this would work better for me, and, and sharing your perspective as we try to figure out our next five years, having your voice in these meetings, and these are a little bit more intimate, where we can work in small groups and actually be able to talk to each other and, you know, share things. I, I really would encourage you guys, when that comes out, think about joining and being part of that process, because it's really helpful for us to hear, hear everyone's side. So thank you. I know it's not always convenient to come out to the meetings, and it's not always easy to get up to talk, so we really do appreciate you coming out and sharing that with us. So, so hopefully have more time, we'll have more opportunities in a couple months to, to have some more, like, sit down and talk, talk together, which is helpful. So thank you. I, you know, I'm going to echo a few other things, you know, Karen Delgado's letter, I agree, can I just reread her thank you to everybody, because I think we all have that sentiment of thanking everybody? We're so, so happy about Bobby, so I'm going to cry about that. I know. I can't again talk more about the event on Sunday, it, having everybody together. Dr. Tui in the rain, putting my table away, I mean, the kids were fabulous. I think you guys had it right, such an inclusive, from every age group, everybody across the community getting to see everybody. It was just, and as Jojo said, so uplifting and happy, and I see us back on this path, seeing all the kids, Anthony, and all you guys. It was just, just wonderful. So I'm so excited of us getting back on that path of working together. We know we have things to, you know, everything's not super smooth, but we can work through it together, so I'm super supportive of that. All the recognition, you know, one-twenty-nine, my, my son got his Eagle Scout in one-twenty-nine, so I think they have well over a hundred and twenty, so, I mean, so I didn't want to put him on the spot, but it's an amazing group that is always, you know, working on things that benefit us as a district, so, and, so thank you, everybody. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. One of the things that I think we have to improve on, not just in Olbridge, not just in the board election, or municipal election, or the state government, our turnouts as a, as a Board of Education, as a city, as a county, as a state, and in the country in general, are terrible. We're lucky if we get thirty or thirty-five percent of our people show, show up for gubernatorial. And if we get thirty-five percent of our people show up this election, you might be lucky if you get a third or a half of that for the Board of Education. I think this is a right that in many countries, it's compulsory to vote. I think everybody should take the time to examine the choices, make the choice in that they believe is the best for the Board of Education, for the township, for the, for the governorship, but get out and vote. Don't pass it by, don't ignore it, because right now, what happens is a small minority of the electorate decides everything, and we should have everybody as much as possible voting.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Anybody else?
Just a little PSA on, so, you know, and I couldn't be more ecstatic about Bobby, and I think that every educator sees the light of their own children and all the children that you serve, so that's why it becomes so emotional. But, you know, we, we always come together when there's, there's a need like that, and we donate blood and platelets, and we do that for Jessica Renegro, and we do it for Bobby, and we do it for other ones, but, you know, there's a real shortage right now of blood and platelets due to the pandemic, and, because lots of people do not want to donate it, they, they don't want to be in that kind of environment, so if you can, you're not only helping children like Bobby, you're, there's hospitals are full of children right now who could use that blood and platelet, so for, for our own children and the children you don't know, make a time to, to do that if you can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sidino. Yes, very important. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have executive session?
We do not.
Yes. Okay. I will end, thank you again, guys. Excellent SEPTA event.
Mrs. De Carroll?
Yes?
Any board member who hasn't seen me personally, come and see me before the end of the meeting?
Okay. Thanks. Okay. So I need a motion to adjourn. Okay. Can I have a second? Okay. Matt?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are finished at eight forty-one.
Thank you guys all for coming.